Potential for other.
No potential to go forward other than to give you an inventory asset of what's in the county.
This is something we'd already discussed on one of our.
Yeah, and so Nikki brought this to the ARP committee and the committee agreed and recommends to that, come to the court for approval. I think the significant thing about this is that, as Nikki said, right now, we don't have any real data to defend our position that broadband is not as good as the FCC says it is here in Wilson County. And I guess, basically, in some of our research, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, many counties are doing this to have the, basically, have the ammo in your hand to refute a lot of this evidence. And so I think it's an important piece. It helps us also when we talk to the broadband providers to see where they're trying to concentrate their efforts and if that matches what we believe is right, and it gives us a basis to be able to talk to everybody on, kind of on equal ground because we can know and understand what we have in the county better.
According to the FCC, acceptable rate for an individual for broadband is 25 megabytes download and three megabytes upload. And according to their map, the top, the north, two-thirds of Wilson County is considered served. The lower third of the county is considered underserved, so they're getting less than 25 megabytes per second. So this, and they're saying that an individual, that's enough. And people who work from home, that is not enough. They're going to max out real quickly. So with.
It's also kind of, and part of it is, is out in the northwest part of the county where they say we're served, there's a lot of dead spots there. And we know that, but we can't prove that because we don't have the data to prove that.
They say we're splotchy. I can't figure out what splotchy means.
Great technical part of it.
Without it, we're not even able to recruit industry in here.
Correct, correct. There will be a new map released in January, but unless you have this information of who's actually receiving what and where your devices are, your towers, your lines, you won't be able to challenge the map effectively. And then this company, Cobb Finley, would also help us go the next step forward, not only with the challenging of the map, but also the grants and how we could get the internet providers here that we need.
We need disinformation for grants to push the grant.
Correct.
From the state or?
In my opinion, yes.
My understanding, didn't the legislature pass $100 million for broadband throughout the, it passed, correct?
It did pass.
How do we get some of that?
Well, my question was going to be, I know money's being requested from the ARPA funds, but if that, that, that all hasn't opened yet. I believe it's scheduled to open sometime in the new year. Is something like this feasibility study, do you know that's going to be covered under the fiber scale grants? Because it would seem to me that if this is something that's going to be required, that it would be included in the fiber grant funds. I don't know because I haven't read up on, on that section of it.
I don't think it's required. I think it's recommended.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. I don't think that feasibility studies are a requirement.
They're not required.
To get grant funding for fiber optics. I just wanted to make, clarify and make sure everybody's aware of that, so.
The next round, the next round of grants, from what I've seen, and it should come out today, is digital literacy grants. How can we help the public become literate in their digital devices?
Yeah, no, I think what Judge is talking about is the actual.
Correct.
Grant funding for fiber in, in county.
Yeah, but that's actually like four billion across the state. And, and we're, we're having, we had a meeting with Spectrum, right? Yeah, two weeks ago, and they're going to come back with their government affairs people and tell us, or help us understand how that we believe that that's going to work moving forward. Because what we don't know is if that money's all going to go straight to them, or whether it flows through the county and we pay them, and if there's going to be, you know, any, any match portion, that's what we're trying to understand.
So would we, I guess something for the court to maybe think about in the future then would be if we pay this $100,000 for this feasibility study, and there is not any grant funding for INUP, is the county going to consider be willing to put forth the money for fiber in the county from the general fund or from any other source? I just want to make sure that if we're going to spend this money on the study, that what do we do with it after the study's done? Are we going to move forward so that it doesn't get kind of lost in the, well, did the study and it's over and done with?
I believe, I believe the short answer to that is, is that we're going to be able to tell the FCC that their map is wrong, and hopefully that gets us more money available to us because we have less availability and it doesn't beat their minimum speeds in that kind of.
And if you don't know where your towers and your wires are, your cabling, you can't tell the internet providers where the service needs to go.
So that's not something that the internet providers are able to tell themselves, I guess?
I'm sure there are, but there are several, several internet providers within the county.
Well, they, they know where their stuff is. They don't necessarily know where their competitors.
Right.
I know it's not required, I'll bet you, when it comes to how to give in the money out, they're going to want to know, what have you all done?
Yeah, I'd air for this.
I think, I think it's a good strategy.
If we delay, we delay. I mean, going to Washington next month, and the first thing the lawmakers are going to ask me, what's your internet capability there? We're going to bring some kind of industry in.
Not the best in the world.
Not the best.
Well, I'll make a motion to enter into a contract with Cobb Finley to create a broadband feasibility study for Wilson County. And the amount it works, $99,750?
$99,775. They were $25,000 short, but not to exceed.
Not, not to exceed.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Perdol, regarding agenda item number five. Are there any other discussion?
Yes, to be clear, the ARPA committee has earmarked this amount of money.
Well, they have recommend, their only ability is to recommend. They can't approve anything. So they have recommended and agreed that, and we have representatives, obviously, from each precinct. So yes, at that meeting, we had this discussion. They said that was a no-brainer. We need to go ahead and do this and understand this.
I believe that was their number one priority on their list.
Yes, it was.
Any other discussion? Here none call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, ayes have it, motion passes. Thank you.
I have the contracts or the quotes for you. I just need to get them all separated for you.
We can get those from you. Agenda item number six, we have Brenda Trevino County Auditor discuss and take action on revising solutions of the OOG grants, and Brenda Trevino County Auditor is authorized.
Yes, so last month, I came to the court with several resolutions for some grants that we have through the Office of the Governor. In those resolutions, we named Judge Whitman as the grants authorized official, only to realize after we submitted it to the Office of the Governor that I am listed as the authorized official for the grant, so they wouldn't accept the resolution. So I came back, spoke with the judge, asked if he wanted me to change it to him so that we leave the resolutions as they were, or leave the authorized official as it currently is, and that is what he recommended. So I've come back and, Judge, if it's okay with you, and I clarified with our county clerk, rather than reading all three of them, because they're all the same, I'm going to read one and reference each individual grant number. Okay. And this is Resolution 2023-2024. Whereas the Wilson County Commissioners Court finds it in the best interest of the citizens of Wilson County, that the following grants be operated for '23, '24. The Rifle-Resistant Body Armor Grant, Violence Crimes, Violent Crimes Against Women Restorative Justice Team Grant, and the Wilson County Victims Assistance Program Grant. Whereas Wilson County Commissioners Court agrees to provide applicable matching funds for the said projects as required. Whereas the Wilson County Commissioners Court agrees that in the event of loss or misuse of the Office of the Governor funds, assures that the funds will be returned to the Office of the Governor in full. And whereas Wilson County Commissioners Court designates for Nortrevino County Auditor as the grantee's authorized official, the authorized official is given the power to apply for, accept, reject, alter, or terminate any grants on behalf of the applicant's agency. Now therefore be it resolved that Wilson County Commissioners Court approves these resolutions and submission passed and approved on this 27th day of November 2023. And it's for those three, one, two, three. I'm sorry, there was one more. The Office of Governor Public Safety Office Homeland Security Division Grant, which is the Operation Lone Star as well.
I'll make a motion to revise the resolutions for the OOG grants, and Brenda Trevino County Auditor is the authorized official.
Check. Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner King. Any other discussion regarding agenda item number six? Here none call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, ayes have it, motion passes. We move to agenda item number seven. Commissioner Precinct Two, Russell King, discuss, take action on receiving construction material on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays only.
So, yeah, the collection facility, we'd like the only construction material, I mean, everything can come in at that time, but for construction material only on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, so we can make sure that we have dumpster space for the weekends, for household trash as well. But with that, we got to make sure that that material is, is separated, all right? So all the wood and everything, metals and stuff like that needs to be separated whenever they come up to the collection facility so they can take it out, put it in the dumpster, correct? But that's pretty much it, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays for construction material only.
Now, the contractors need to separate it or the collections facility?
Contractors. So whenever they come through the gate, it's already separated. So whenever they're putting in whatever, they're not sitting there separating everything at one time. So, because remember, we're only burning brush, we're not burning any construction material. We cannot ask to go into a dumpster, so.
So how we, I'm just envisioning these guys coming in with a big old dump truck full of everything. So how are we going to get the word to them? We need to get it on the website? Have John do that?
Right. We'll have it on the website as well. I was going to give it to John after this, but we're just going to get to them before the court.
And then we need to get a post-it label, put it there in the gate when it comes in the yard, if this construction material is needed, separated?
Right. Yep. I can be signed. Be signed for that.
The way, okay, you're talking about the brush, I need to ask, we're not burning brush.
We're not burning. We're just going to burn it from DCQ burn. We're collecting brush. Then we'll find some other project later on, once we can figure out.
All right, Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion for agenda item number seven.
I'd like to make a motion to collect construction material on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays only.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Martin. You have any other discussion regarding agenda item number seven? Here none call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, ayes have it, motion passes. We move to agenda item number eight. We have, again, Commissioner King, two items, eight A and B. You might want to combine those on one vote, it depends. But discuss, take action on reappointment of Kenneth Buck Griffin as ESD Four Commissioner, and discuss and take action on reappointment of Stephen Moore to ESD Four Commissioner.
Yeah, I'd like to combine them as well. For ESD Four as Commissioners, I'd like to reappoint Kenneth Buck Griffin as well as Stephen Moore back to the board.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Aiken regarding agenda item number eight, A and B. Are there any other discussion? Here none call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, ayes have it, motion passes. We move to agenda item number nine. Discuss and take action on revised interlocal agreement, Medical Examiner's Office District Attorney Audrey Lewis. The only thing that had changed on there, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Your Honor, was they increased the board to nine, correct? Same interlocal agreement. It's kind of a broad agreement, just saying that we're going to agree with the other ones to move forward. There has been an $11 million grant presented by the Governor's Office to build this facility. I don't think you're going to need the whole 11 million because when we first started doing the research, it was about 7.5. Karnes County has accepted the interlocal agreement. I believe LaSalle County has, Adiscos will be doing it today, my understanding. So have you all seen a copy of this before? Okay, the only thing that's changed, the only thing that's changed, I'm going to start from down here, is that they increased the board to nine.
Right, which is what she talked about when she.
Correct.
Is there, is there still a chance another county might join this?
Freo County is on the edge right now because they have very limited resources. But they're looking at it. So if, my understanding is, Ms. Lewis said even the Governor's Office now is looking at funding this thing 100%. If that's the case, then that would be wonderful. And we won't have to worry about the pro-rata charges that are on the back, which I have some concerns too, because again, I don't know if we're going to need the entire 11 million to build this beautiful facility. Again, we did the research, it was about 7.5 when we first talked about it. But it's very much needed and it's caught the attention of the Governor's Office. We do, we do have plans to have other counties come in and contract that will need those services, so. We're not there yet. You're looking at maybe two years from now, you'll be thinking about construction on this facility. So the only changes we have is the increase from seven to nine, I think, on the board.
I'll make a motion to accept the revised interlocal agreement for the Medical Examiner's Office.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Aiken regarding agenda item number nine. Here none, do we have any other discussion? Here none call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, ayes have it, motion passes. We move to agenda item number 10. Commissioner Martin, discuss, take action to give Phelps an easement through Precinct One Yard for a neighboring property.
So you have a map of Phelps, and basically where that orange dot is, they're kind of running the center, going back to the, to the blue dot. That runs down the east, that's my, my yard. Phelps wants an easement to serve my neighbor that was behind him, Mr. Mendoza. He's been a great neighbor and has helped keep an eye on things out there on nights and weekends. And so basically, you know, that Phelps always has a requirement to take one easement centerline on the whole countryside, and since it falls onto our property, they've, they've asked for that easement. County attorneys looked at it, and Judge, I need to, the copy got scanned and emailed to me, was pretty horrible, so I'm waiting for a hard copy operated to you as soon as I get it to sign. So I'll make a motion to approve the easement for Phelps through the Precinct One Yard.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Mark, Martin, seconded by Commissioner King regarding agenda item number 10. Is there any other discussion? Does this mean we get free electricity now?
I tried.
Yeah, right. Any other discussion, Commissioner? Here none call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, motion passes. Move to agenda item number 11. We have our County Sheriff, Ken Center, going to give us our monthly progress.
Okay, the packet I gave you this morning, first three pages are the patrol stats for the month. Well, it says made through October. I'm highlighting basically the month of October. Most important ones on there, of course, is total number of calls, reportable and non-reportable. There's a little over 1,400 calls handled by 16, and I think 16 patrol officers, and that's almost 100 apiece. So they're plenty busy. On the bottom of that first page, you'll see my proactive stuff, patrol buys and security checks, basically checking businesses, buildings, and stuff at night, during daytime. Patrol buys is basically areas of concern, either through citizen complaints or criminal activity, and we set those up so that we normally are routinely checked by them. Page two, first column there, mental health ED reports, 25. You can see we handle almost one of those a day in a month. Those are extremely time-consuming and sometimes asset-consuming. Takes more than one person. Usually they're three to four hours in length. So that's one of the major issues we have with short staffing. Next one down, you see the animal and livestock complaints. Well, because we so dry for so long, livestock complaints really went up in the month of October. Lots of cattle out, and we spend a lot of time putting them back and overfunding owners to keep their animals in. Last page, really, is just basic stuff that they did month to month as far as arrests. Next item is the, basically, our OLS Task Force guys, the two units, their stats for the month of October, 24 felony arrests, 16 misdemeanor arrests. They made 141 traffic stops, seized 51.2 grams of meth, one ounce of marijuana. And I believe the October stats, we're going to actually get our first legal deal. We had some fentanyl tests positive the other day, that they got this month. Last page is my CID unit. You can see total number of cases assigned to CID is 374, but active cases 231. With the promotion of two new CID investigators this month, that's going to average out to about 40 cases apiece for six investigators.
Sure, on, on the first page, you have traffic complaints. What, it's separate from your citations and warnings. What's the difference?
Traffic complaints is when we take a complaint from citizens about traffic in certain area. Not, and that number's probably not real accurate because I don't think they all get coded that way. They should be getting coded that way, but they're not. Because it only shows four for this month, and I know we take more than four traffic complaints.
Because I probably sent you four.
Exactly. Like I said, that's how they entered into the computer system, and a lot of the traffic complaints will actually get coded into the patrol buys because it's the place we need to be.
And the other one on the animal complaint calls, is that loose dogs?
Loose dogs, yes. You can see we were handling a little over, about one and a half a day. We ran about 45 of them. And it's staying pretty consistent so far this year. I haven't any complaints on them. I know we went by and talked to the man, told him we needed to keep him up. We haven't any complaints on them that I've seen. Okay.
Is he free roaming them? Is that what?
He actually put a sign up, saying they were free roaming goats. Yes, free range goats.
Was that luck free roaming? If you can catch one, you can keep it, or what?
Maybe. I don't know. But yeah, but we did, we did go by and talk to him and explain to him that they, they needed to be fenced in. And I have not seen a complaint since we talked to him. That's been about, I would say, three weeks to a month ago now. But if they are still out, I'll put them back on patrol back.
Agenda item number 12, we have Ms. Dawn Barnett, our tax, County Tax Assessor Collector. Give us her monthly report.
Good morning. It has been a very busy month at the tax office. As y'all can see, the total collected for October was $45,491,079,44. We issued $175,575,32 in refunds. The fees collected were $2,210, and the total amount paid out to the taxing entities were, was $45,317,714,12. We had $124,267 tax transactions for the month of October. The DMV, of course, that kind of gets put on the back burner for us during October, but road and bridge fees, $42,710. Commissions payable, $13,950,50. Young farmers, $320. Amounts due to the state comptroller was $865,716,71, for a total of $922,697,21 collected for the DMV, and $5,152 transactions. Texas Parks and Wildlife, we collected $13,109,28 with 41 transactions. So the total amount processed in the tax office for the month of October was $46,426,885,93. And the total amount of transactions that came through our office was $129,460. I'm, I'm sorry, $129,460 transactions. Do y'all have any questions? Good. This does not include phone calls. These are just strictly actual cash transactions with money that came through our office.
Can you stick around a little bit? We're almost through. I need to add a question.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Move to agenda item number 13. We have Lou Surappa, our interim, well, she's not interim anymore. She is our permitting development director. Come up on item number 13A1. We have pipeline crossing, number one permit, 155 EBX Eagle Ford Partners LLC, Precinct Two, County Road 243, review and approve.
So EBX Eagle Ford poses to place an eight-inch saltwater pipeline with 12-inch steel casing, 10-foot minimum depth of the ditch line on County Road 243. And I previously sent the paperwork to Commissioner King so he could revise it. This is the only one I've got, just one.
I'll look out there, look inside. It's, it's right there. It's going to be perfect. So I'll make a motion to, to approve the permit, number 155 EBX Eagle Ford Pipeline.
Motion has been made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Martin regarding agenda item 13A1. Are there any other discussion? Here none call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, ayes have it, the motion passes. We move now to agenda item number 14, Ms. Christina Muthar, County Treasurer, discuss, take, take action on Wilson County's 2023 investment policy.
Good morning.
Morning.
What I have presented to you today is our investment policy for 2023. It was approved in court last year at this time, so I'm bringing it to you this year to be approved. in court last year at this time, so I'm bringing it to you this year to be approved.
What's changed?
Nothing, nothing this year, sir.
Just a requirement that we have to understand.
That requires, the Public Funds Investment Act requires us to be annually reviewed, revised if needed, and adopted with the county.
Just based on the audits you've performed, we're, everything we have in here is good?
Yes.
We entertain a motion for Agenda Item Number Fourteen, Wilson County 2023 Investment Policy. I'll make a motion to approve the Wilson County Investment Policy for 2023. Second. Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, I'm sorry, motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Peridola, is there any other discussion on Agenda Item Number Fourteen?
Judge, if you must give your final verdict, third record's open.
Here none call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes. Move to Agenda Item Number Fifteen, we have Jaylen Bonford, our Human Resource Specialist, presentation of payroll and personnel changes.
Joni Palacios was hired as an indigent defense coordinator, making 1918 per hour, or $39,901,68, annually effective November 8. Jared Liao was hired as a groundskeeper for the Maintenance Department, making 1724 per hour, or $35,859,20, effective November 13. Jessica Tesman was hired as a tax customer service specialist for the Tax Office, making 1642 per hour, or $34,153,60, annually effective November 13. Deidre Garcia was hired as a part-time assistant to the Victims Assistance Coordinator, making 1650 per hour, effective November 13. Amalia Zertucci was hired as an indigent defense coordinator, making 1918 per hour, or $39,901,68, annually effective November 8. Audrey Kailik was hired as a court coordinator slash administrative assistant to the County Court at Law Judge and Human Resources Department, making 1923 per hour, $40,000 annually effective November 20. Mari Grossman was hired as a tax customer service specialist for the Tax Office, making 1642 per hour, or $34,153,60, annually effective today, November 27. Naomi Lockey resigned from her position as a Sergeant Commissary Officer for the Sheriff's Department, effective October 31, and Charles Wagner resigned from his position as a Corrections Officer for the Sheriff's Department, effective November 26.
Questions, Ms. Barnett? Thank you. We move to Agenda Item Number Sixteen, Brenda Trevino County Auditor, discuss and take action on county bills.
I have a total of $414,991.73, or did I have a view? I do see a change, I just realized something, but it's not a major change, and you'll notice on, very first page, Department of Labor, non-departmental, the fourth line, I'm sorry, fifth, fourth line for a Christmas light installation, actually, this does not come out of the general fund, that comes out of the Christmas capital spending fund, so I will have a need to change that to the fourth line.
That one bill that came in, I just read it today.
From Aquafax?
Yeah, from Aquafax.
Yeah.
We normally, are we on a 30-day payment with them?
We are, so that would probably be processed in the next paper cycle, I don't believe it's in this one, so I can't get to that this time. If that did come to my email, I'll send it to you. It's the, since we get, we pay for that, and it's grant funded, and then we get reimbursed.
So primarily, it's the appraisal district that uses that, who uses that?
No, it's the County Judges' Office, the, hey, we need to come out of the County Judges'.
Yeah, we don't want to come out of there, that's why my name's on there.
Yeah.
But yeah, I don't know where, yeah.
I believe it's the County Judges'.
All Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion for Agenda Item Number Sixteen, take action on county bills. Second. Motion made by Commissioner Peridola, seconded by Commissioner Martin, any other discussion on Agenda Item Number Sixteen? Here none call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Eyes have it, motion passes. Move to Agenda Item Number Seventeen for adjournment, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Commissioner Peridola, seconded by Commissioner King, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes, we are adjourned. 9:41 a.m.